All right, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024. It's 9:05 a.m. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board to my left, Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Gary Edwards, Commissioner Emily Klaus, and Commissioner Carolina Mahia, participating virtually. Public virtual attendance is available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. And we have an hour and a half to review the proposed agenda for next week's board meeting, which is Tuesday, July 30th. We will take a break and then we'll go into a planning session shortly after 10:30. So first up is to look at next week's proposed agenda. The Hedges Legions would be led by Commissioner Edwards. We'll have approval of the agenda and presentation regarding proclamation for the Thurston County Fair Weekend. Clerk of the Board, anything to be, to add to that? Okay, so our new fair manager and some fair board members, that'll be great. And then the fair kicks off on the 31st, the very next day, and runs for five days. And I've been out to the fairgrounds, I think all of us have, and preparations are hard at work, so I'm excited for the event this year. Any questions on the fair proclamation? Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board follows. County Manager's update, anything you're planning to report on?
No, nothing at this time.
Items A through C on three consent agenda, 3A through 3C. Commissioners, item is 3A, RFP for federal government affairs services.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners Rob Gelder, Assistant County Manager. This, as the board may be aware, we'd had a relationship with a legislative affairs group that ended earlier, probably in June timeframe. And the interest of being able to support the county's efforts and desires to be able to access additional resources to support various programs, et cetera. We are looking to get board approval to go out for an RFP, to actually do a competitive process to select a firm that would be able to assist us in that effort. And so this is just the start of the process for it to go out, hopefully hit the streets in a couple of weeks or actually next week, and then get that process so that we can get some proposals back by mid-August timeframe. Happy to answer any questions.
Don't we have something similar to that going on right now?
So we did have a contract with Strategies 360, with the firm that we've been utilizing, and they terminated that contract in June. And so we are looking to find another firm that can provide that at federal level. We do have an individual through Capital Consulting, Deborah Mangia, who works for the county for state-level legislative affairs.
I guess what was the expenditure for that trial process and what did we receive as a benefit?
That's a great question. I don't have that answer for you off the top of my head, but I can get back to you on that. I know if I recall correctly, we did not have really any expenditures this year for that, but most of it was last year.
I thought we paid some money for the federal contract.
Yeah, we did pay, last year we paid...
Sorry.
Last year we paid $20,000 and in exchange, we got an analysis of the Federal Infrastructure Act and assistance with each of our offices and departments to identify federal funds that we could apply for. We did not receive assistance with the application. After the first of the year, as you may recall, the company was going through some restructuring and we had a clause in our contract that we could terminate with notice. We did pay for the first few months, but we were not receiving any services. And the county manager negotiated that with the termination of the contract that the company would repay all of our funds for this year. So although we paid out $20,000 this year, we will get it back.
Commissioner here, see your hand.
I guess I've been the one who's been working closely kind of on this and just really want to state the value of this. I mean, this year we're getting a million dollars for the fairgrounds. Well, not this year, but we're getting a million dollars for the fairgrounds from Congresswoman Strickland with our appropriations request that we submitted. And while the lobbyists did not really step up because of the transition, like earlier on, they were the ones who were guiding us through this process and making sure that, you know, we had the information to submit these applications. So in a way, there was value in the information that they gave us early on. Then it kind of fell through, but you know, that's, that's another story. But the value really is there and a good federal team and really getting those services that we need. We're not only getting that, we're also getting money for the reprocessing plant down in San Onofre. So, you know, already it's, it's paid itself over, you know, a couple of years just with that funding once the federal budget is approved in Congress.
I have a question about the, so the structure of the RFP, I mean, are we... I think at the beginning, we weren't, we were new to it and we weren't really sure what we were paying them to do. And I remember some initial kind of confusion about, you know, how, what the scope of the services were going to be. So are we setting a dollar cap and saying, propose what you can do for that amount? Are we saying, we want, these services tell us how much, how cheaply you can do those services? I mean, how are we structuring what we're asking for?
It's, it's a little bit of both. We took the scope of service that had been originally developed and incorporated into the RFP as a basic framework for the proposals to respond to. But we are indicating in there basically the same budgeted amount that we had for the service, which is $60,000. And so hopefully it'll be, as proposals come in, then that becomes an opportunity for that back and forth negotiation with the firm that is scored the highest, basically.
I guess just as we move forward, when we get a little closer to what that's going to look like, I don't know. Are we going out for that bid now without having all the information that Commissioner Menter's brought up? It sounds like we don't have a real plan. We've got a concept we're looking for. My concern is that we've got participation in the EDC. We've got our congressional earmark possibilities. We've got those representatives of each one of those congressional folks that come to our city meetings. And they've really been pretty good about communicating with us and telling us what is available. So I just want to make sure that we end up with something for our expenditure, so.
So with the EDC and having those congressional staff there, Commissioner Edwards, I mean, honestly, the lobbyists were helping out the EDC and like helping them submit this grant, right? And so any questions that the EDC had, you know, the lobbyists were available to answer questions for them too because they knew that this was something that Thurston County was interested in. So I, I mean, this is not just something for us, really, like it was... When it comes to those federal appropriations, you know, I think the reason that we need something that's going to be a little bit more scoped out is because we need a little bit more support. What I've learned through going through the federal lobbyist process is we need a little bit more support than, you know, what we initially thought. We are just not as bussed out in the federal arena as, you know, in some aspects. And we need someone who's going to hold our hand a little bit more and really guide us through, through that whole process a little bit more than, than I think the previous firm thought or even we thought at the beginning. Just because there's just so many hoops that you have to jump at the federal level.
Commissioner Fornier.
I'm, I'm in support of this. I think we've just kind of begun to scratch the surface, especially when it comes to like, you know, federal asks and federal efforts. But, you know, I, I'm curious about the things that Commissioner Menter has asked about. And, and, you know, I, I understand, you know, I kind of understand some of the things Commissioner Edwards are talking about. And that, like, I want to make sure that we're in the, you know, we're in the wheelhouse steering this and it's not the tail wagging the dog. You know, there's a lot of times that I've dealt with consultants and they don't, you know, you, you get into a contract and then all of a sudden they're not listening to what you want and what you have to say. And they're, you know, they sometimes are belittling and they're, well, they know more than you do. So, you know, they, they want to go this way, they want to go that way. But, you know, as long as we are in charge, you know, and getting what we want and they're working for us and we've got, you know, Assistant County Manager that's got his finger on the pulse. And I, and I think we're just, you know, we, this is an opportunity to dig deeper into, you know, what we can bring home to our county.
What I will say is, to what Commissioner Mahia mentioned, the perspective I have is they were working and giving us a product of pulling everything together, as Assistant County Manager Campbell said. But then they had some organizational internal things going on which caused us probably not to get the, the service that we should have been getting for the last several months. And I think had they delivered on that service, we would have probably seen our yield on some of the earmark requests prove a lot better. And to what you're saying, Commissioner Fornier, you're right, they need to be quarterbacked closely. And that's something that we want to talk about with the Assistant County Manager's input on working with the lobbyists, working with our departments, tracking items, and then working those things through. So that's where, when we sat down and looked at their performance, we had that conversation that led to them admitting and coming forward and saying, yeah, we haven't been serving you the best and so they're giving us a reimbursement. But then their conclusion was, we don't know if we can serve you, so we're ending the contract with you.
I'm glad that we came to that.
Yeah, I'm glad they came to that conclusion without us forcing our hand. So where we're at is, I don't know that we've had a full year where we've seen what can a lobbyist do for us. But the little work that they did do in orientating things and opening up doors for us caused us to be successful in a couple of cases. If someone's working consistently with us, there's a lot of conversations that commissioners can be having with representatives and tying in opportunities with other organizations so that we're coming with combined asks and really bringing dollars into Thurston County as a whole. That's the kind of quarterbacking and coordination we want to see.
I think the efforts we've done with the state lobbyists have been, that's proven itself.
Yes.
And, you know, we'll do the same with the federal lobbyists we just haven't yet.
Yeah, we haven't had enough traction and we were with a firm that was, had some internal changes that took place that affected their product. But they admitted it and we acknowledge them for that.
I, I just want to add that also with the board, another thing the board really needs to consider is, again, is a grant writer. I mean, the amount of, the level of work that those appropriations requests took were quite a bit for all of us. And I'll include myself on that because I was submitting those. And the back and forth, the trying to get letters of support, right? If you're just writing the grant, then that's one thing, but we were trying to write the grants, we were trying to get letters of support. We were trying to coordinate to get all the information from all the different stakeholders. And this is a request for the future, but it's something that the board really needs to have in mind of the need of that because going through that process myself and knowing how much time it took to submit those. And I am ecstatic that some of them have gotten to the level that they have and we're just waiting for that congressional approval, right? It's like, oh my gosh, all that work was worth it. But for the ones that didn't make it through, like, I'm still a little hurt about it because I was like, that was a lot of work that went into it. And, and so it's just something that I know staff is doing on the daily. And as, as we're submitting more federal grants and more state grants, I think that it's something that the board should consider in the future because the level of work was, is quite immense. And as we're growing, we're going to be, we're going to be competing with bigger counties and we want to be sure that we're not spreading staff thin.
I had a question for Commissioner Mahia. Well, actually for anyone who can answer it, but is the grant writing component not within the scope? I know that it was mentioned earlier that we didn't receive actual assistance with the applications, but we received assistance in like seeking out opportunities that are available. If they were, if they were performing, you know, or offering the services that we thought we were paying for, would that have included a grant writer or no?
They would, they sometimes help with like the wording of things and like the, that's basically what they offered. And I'm looking at Robin because Robin was, but when it actually came to the grant writing piece, they were not...
They were clear from the start that they did not do the actual writing of the grant request.
Okay, is that, oh, go ahead.
I'm just saying, a good, oh, go ahead, Rob.
Well, I was just going to say I can provide the board with the statement of work, the scope of work that was included in the RFP that might help clarify what the expectations are. But in Task Eight specifically, we are asking the responding consultant to support Thurston County drafting federal funding opportunities that we decide to pursue. So there is, while they may not be the primary in crafting it, they are supporting that effort.
When it comes to grant writing, like generally, my expectation is that everyone that works here is a grant writer. Kind of like, there's so many different, they're all available for different pockets of government. And depending on where you are, like there's, you know, like even at the lowest level, you can, you can, you can write for a $5,000 grant for your thing, but you've got to coordinate with the greater body, but like, I mean...
I mean, grant writing is a really specific skill set. Commissioner Mahia knows too.
It is, it is, but it's also one that everybody can, like, you know, in a, in a government, you know, how many people work here?
Thirteen hundred.
Thirteen hundred? If just 10% are decent writers, I don't, I don't know, I just, like... Everybody, it's an all hands on, in my opinion, it's an all hands on thing and everybody, you know...
Well, that's how it's been right now and it's just, unfortunately, it's just, it's not enough. I mean, it's a lot of work and I, Rebecca, not to call Rebecca out, Rebecca Harvey, she's like constantly putting in for grants and the amount of time it just takes her to like be submitting grants constantly. Like she's, that's taking up a lot of her time. It's just, she's having to like write these grants and it's like, well, right? Then we're losing that staffing capacity because she's writing these grants that we need to be able to complete these projects. And then, right, then she's not able to do other things. And so I think that we just need assistance, you know, because we are growing. And while, you know, I'm happy to kick in, I know that most of you are happy to kick in on something like this and, and, and write it out. But I, I mean, writing that one out, it took me all Friday, Taylor. I was, and then I was calling Josh too because I couldn't get into the system. And Josh was helping me out and I was like, how do you come up with a cool name like TC Saves? Like, what do I name mine? Like, so it's just, there's a lot of intricacies that go into those federal grants that I...
Commissioner Edwards, I saw your hand next.
Is this pretty open-ended on the dollar amount? Or have we got a cap somewhere along the line that we're going to, okay, we're going to talk about spending X and we're going to receive Y? I mean, that's...
The baseline we're using is what the board approved last time. This is permission to go out for the RFP, to see what we get, to then bring back to the commissioners about what the RFP's yielded and what that is, so.
What the offer is.
Again, just to frame it, this is simply...
I'm, I'm in favor of it. I want to make it all work.
And what, what we want is a consultant firm that has good relationships here locally. Because at the end of the day, that's where you get the traction. You see, a, a good lobbyist firm is helping you get your ideas through the door and telling you what you need to adjust them and orientate them so that it gets as, as much support as possible. Sometimes ideas die not because they're not good, but because they haven't been effectively raised to the right people's attention in an environment long enough for them to say, you guys are in the queue. Because what I've found in my previous context is sometimes your idea doesn't get approved today, but with changes and alterations, it may get approved next year or the following year because you've effectively raised the attention and you're gaining partners along the way. That's the work we need to be constantly working on with our departments. It's a different role than just grant writing, you know, we do need strong writers. But we need someone that's helping us understand timeframes, the changing dynamics politically, what's going on. Some of the reason why we struggled this time is because information came in pretty late and it's, hey, you have to get this done immediately, move it forward.
County Manager, I was going to ask you, since you referred to that, so you obviously worked for quite a bit bigger county.
Yes.
Do you guys use consulting firms in this, in this way?
Yeah, what we saw is when we coordinated the consulting firm with county executive leadership team with department heads and we tied those three together, our yield increased year over year, especially with the earmarks, earmarks being brought back in. It was simply, we got to raise the awareness and that's what a good lobbyist firm is doing for us all the time.
I think Deborah's done that for us.
On the state level.
State level.
Yeah, but not on the federal and there's bigger dollars I think for us to give.
But should she maybe be involved in even helping with this because she's been so effective? That I, I'm, I'm in favor of doing this. I just want to know, we've got limited resources. I want to know what we're...
So we're going to keep, keep to the, the dollar amount that we had, go out with those parameters and then come back with proposals to then vet with the commissioners.
I don't want to keep dragging this out, so I'll wrap my comments up. But I wanted to say, I'm really in favor of kind of what Commissioner Mahia is suggesting. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but like the idea of having a grant writer, I think is really important because Commissioner Edwards is right, we do have limited resources. And the way to leverage those resources and increase them is by having a strong grant writer. And there is also the skill set of like seeking out the opportunities and making sure the timelines are going well for us. But having someone who's a strong writer will save staff time and that's a lot of money when we have our high-level leadership working on grants. That's a huge burden for them to bear. And then they lead these committees, like we had our TCMC meeting last night for climate stuff and Rebecca worked, and not to keep calling Rebecca out, but like as an example, she works really hard to manage that, that council. And on top of that, all the other tasks she's working on. And she's not an isolated, you know, this isn't an isolated situation. It's all of our high-level leadership who are running these committees and councils. It's just a lot of work and having someone who can help bring in funds is, that's really important. So I'd be interested in like a larger conversation about how we can support our staff by lessening that burden on them to seek out and write grants for the things that they need.
I don't have a lot of experience to know, but... I don't have a lot of experience to know, but the most experience I have with seeing grants are in the salmon recovery world, where I, I do look at applications for my job there or my role there. And, I mean, I could see how a grant writer could give some tips. But, I mean, the substance is like, substance has to be provided by the subject matter expert. Like, there's no, you can't hire someone that can write a salmon recovery grant and then write a climate mitigation grant, then write a transportation grant. I mean, that's just, like, not the meat of it. I mean, it's all, it's very specific, what I see, you know, about the project, how it's structured. I mean, so, like, I don't, I, the interplay between a grant-writing professional versus the subject matter experts that kind of Commissioner Forney was talking about, like, I don't really understand that tension and how much of the work goes to, how much the work can be done by a generic grant writer versus a subject matter expert. So I don't, I don't have an opinion about this, I guess, is what I'm saying, because I have a lack of understanding.
I've tried to find, just like, I want a grant writer. I went, I went through that for years. And like, I mean, there's people that'll write any, you know, there's people that'll write, author things up. But grants are typically specific, whether it's for parks or it's for environmental issues. And like, a lot of times, there's consultants that are specific to that thing. But like, RCO grants, like, there's consultants that are very specific to that process, that board, those. So like,
And our problem is, we deal with like a thousand different things. We're not just, and we're not just a salmon recovery organization writing salmon recovery grants.
Yeah, yeah, or, yeah, when you're a nonprofit that is focused on one cause, it's a different, I think it's a different situation.
Commissioner Mejia?
It was Commissioner Koss and then
Okay, sorry.
I just want to say, like, it sounds like at the table here, we have two commissioners who have experienced directly with, like, writing grants. I've also written grants for, like, my nonprofit, you know, in the past. And it's a lot of work, but a good grant writer can sit down with the subject matter expert and say, give me all the materials you have, tell me what the vision is for this, and then they can go off and write it. And it's a one-hour meeting, a couple times with, you know, I keep saying Rebecca, that's the vision I have in my head of this. But like, with the staff person, rather than the staff person spending countless hours, staying up all night to try and get something in in a time crunch, it's, it is a lot of work. But a good grant writer can take all of that material, synthesize it, and consolidate it, and bring a good product forward that'll get us more money. And that would be huge for our county. I don't think that we could, like, I don't think we could overstate the value of having someone who can do that well.
Yeah, but if I could, Chair, I think to, to this item, we're talking about a federal lobbyist.
I'm sorry, I was like, I'm sorry, I like deviating.
And to the item about grant writing, what I would ask is, knowing that this is, I think it's been a good conversation, knowing that there's perspective among the commissioners, let me talk to organization leadership to see, I understand we have some program managers, but let, let me see what's out there. I think what, you know, you've used Rebecca Harvey as a, as a great example, because she's a fantastic writer. I told her that the other day. But what we're finding is that the actual implementation of a grant is operational in nature. There is a lot of connectivities. And so happy to take direction back to figure out what's a good position, figuration for how we do this, if the goal is, we should be more competitive on grants. Now, on the federal lobbyist side, if we had a good federal lobbyist who's doing three things for us, tracking timelines and when opportunities are coming so that we're, and sometimes they come out very late. Two is working the relationships so that our folks, our, our representatives know the county has ideas in the pipeline and we're sharing those ideas as early as possible. And then three, helping our staff understand what will get us the most traction and what won't, so that we're orientating things as we're putting stuff together. Because I, I do agree with you, Commissioner Mejia, there was a scramble last time. So I'm very proud of the effort that, in that scramble, of what we were able to accomplish, I think the opportunity with a good firm on board, if we align our resources, like Rob and Josh and, and Public Works and some of these other great departments who have good staff there, they give, if, if they're given time and we set priorities, I think we can go after some big ticket items.
Yeah, I was just gonna apologize for kind of deviating. I was just saying, conversation part, because I, I really see a mesh in there, right, in the future. But fully supportive about the RFP. I guess I was going to suggest, is this a conversation we can have with our appointed directors, our appointed directors meeting, right, when they're all here? Because I agree with you of, it, it really impacts them and it impacts their staff. Really, most of all, you know, seeing that the program, program managers are really under the commissioner's office. But like, you know, the directors are, are the ones who, who really it impacts. And so maybe having this as, as an item, kind of hearing from them, or if you just want to have that meeting with them, you know, kind of at that executive level, that's okay too. That was just a suggestion.
A little bit of both. I can talk with them as a topic, get to, get a sense of where they're at, and then we can bring that back.
Touch base with the auditor too, just because I know Auditor Hall's, she's, she has thoughts and ideas. And she's shared with me, and I don't want to mischaracterize them. But if you can touch base with her office about, you know, her experience in managing this as well, just to throw it into the pot for discussion.
Sure, absolutely.
Just, just real quick, I, I'm hoping that we'll look at some of the AI abilities with new technology. I've read some resumes and some grants that were written. And, and the demonstration that I saw, I mean, they were written in like 30 seconds. I'm not, I'm not exaggerating that. It was unbelievable, the information that was asked and the end product that came out on a particular topic or an individual job application. It's, it's just unbelievable what that can turn out when it comes to specializing on a particular topic. It's, it's crazy, it's kind of scary, actually. And, and I think I, I'm gonna say that was six months ago. So, I mean, I know exponentially it is changing. You know, so
Self-aware by now.
Yeah, there's a lot of opportunities out there to utilize technology.
All right, so we have support for moving forward on 3A. And if there's anything we need to 3A is supported as, as Assistant County Manager Gelder described it. Or did somebody want to see?
No, I think we voiced our concerns and he knows that, so I'm all for wanting the mood.
Okay, there's something. All right, let's go forward then to 3B. Commissioner's item, Department of Commerce Early Learning Facilities Program, Childcare Pre-Design Contract Approval.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jenica Machado, Economic Development Manager. In early 2023, the Board of County Commissioners directed staff to explore the concept of redeveloping Building 7 at the Courthouse campus into a childcare facility. In October 2023, staff submitted a grant to the Department of Commerce Early Learning Facilities Program in an effort to secure funding for a pre-designed study that would further evaluate feasibility, provide concept design, and generate redevelopment construction cost estimates. In February 2024, Thurston County was awarded a $20,890 grant. The Department of Commerce grant contract is now ready for Commissioner's approval. No Thurston County funds are needed for this study. The grant does not buy in Thurston County to future development. And the contract has been reviewed and approved by the P A O. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, you, you, you just, you just hit one of my questions about what we're committed to doing. And it sounds like we don't, if this doesn't pan out, for whatever reason, we're not, by accepting the grant, we're not committing ourselves to any outcome.
No, and I confirmed that with our contract manager at Commerce, that this is understood to be fully exploratory and there is no commitment to future development.
Okay, that was my concern.
Chair, that's what Jenica and I, first of all, just thank you, Jenica. I know you're stuck in New York, and so I appreciate you being here this morning. But those were questions we had too, with just everything that's going on right now. The, the changing nature of some of the conversations around facilities.
Any other questions for Jenica? Nope, thank you, Jenica.
Safe travels, Jenica.
That brings us to 3C, Central Services Sole Source Purchase for T C S O Motorola radios.
Bruce Rorba, Central Services. This is requesting approval of a sole source contract with Motorola for the amount of $171,164 for the purchase of 10 vehicle-mounted and 11 handheld radios. This is part of the Sheriff's Office additional hires this year. This purchase has been reviewed by the internal auditor and the P A O office.
Questions for Bruce?
Every time I see Motorola, I'm like, they're still in existence.
I know. I saw the same thing. Yeah, we've seen those a few times.
We've got funding to do this.
Yes, it was incorporated in the, in the overall package.
Good to go.
Thank you.
Commissioner, item 4A, Interlocal Agreement for Reimbursement of Involuntary Commitment Court Services. Assistant Man, County Manager Campbell?
Yes. This agreement is with the Thurston Mason B H A S O. And it pays for the services the county provides for involuntary treatment court. It covers the costs of Superior Court, the clerk, the prosecutor, and public defense. And in the past, we had a contract with the B H A S O that had simply covered our actual costs. However, what we found last year is there is a state law that requires that reimbursement be based on a three-year rolling average of the cost per case. So we changed the contract last year. This is a continuation of the contract with the B H A S O. So while it doesn't cover 100% of the cost of the county, it does cover about 90, 90 to 95% of our costs. So the contract for the year would be $1.8 million. We've worked jointly with Financial Services to estimate the rate per case. And we've worked closely with the B H A S O to come to an agreement on this contract. So we are seeking your approval to sign it.
And this money comes from?
The money comes from, it, it's initially paid out from the general fund, but the B H A S O reimburses us approximately 90 to 95% of our actual costs.
Can we get that other 5% or 10% elsewhere other than the general fund?
To pay for the court services for involuntary treatment, I don't know of any other funds.
Treatment, sales tax or?
I don't think it would be a valid use of the T S T fund.
We could take that back and look if that's part of the commissioner's desire for this item.
What is the, what is the nature of that gap? Is it that there's just a few things that aren't covered in a list of things that are covered? Or is it that the rolling average is fluctuating and we're not, we don't catch up in the future or?
It's a little of both. The law specifically precludes the county from including indirect costs in the, the average. And caseloads are changing over time. So as they go up in any current year, we're spending a little more than the prior three years' average. But the amount will go up over time and so will our costs.
So in the past, when we were going, like, department by department, we were including indirect costs?
We were including everything.
And the state is basically just kind of changed that?
Yes.
Or the, our interpretation of what state law mandates changed that? So nothing's really changed in terms of how we're doing business and stuff? It's just, okay. I T A, you'll hear this referred to as, if you're not familiar with it, I T A courts. It's its own, it's its own beast within the court umbrella, Superior Court. Any other questions on this item, 4A? Okay, thank you. 5A, Public Health and Social Services Amendment Number 21 to the Washington State Department of Health Consolidated Contract.
Commissioners, apologies, Jen Fry Height, I'm not sure if there's anyone else. The, the HUD Regional Director just arrived at Lily. So she had to step into a meeting with
It's a big deal.
And so she is not here to speak to this item, but I can hold that up if we can come back to it.
Yeah. Okay, well, just for, we have a series of amendments to this consolidated contract that add money to it. And it sounds like this is just one in a line. Commissioners should have, have seen just one, just one more.
Yeah, and we don't really get into, we don't really get much detail as to what it connects to usually. So I'm not sure what there's going to be more to say about it, but It, it pretty much is covered in the, the action itself. But the Amendment Number 21 provides an additional funding of 1.9 million and revises the statement of work specifically for the various programs. And this is foundational public health services funding's coming through. And it amends a statement of work for the following programs, the Executive Office of Resiliency and Health Security, Infectious Disease Systemic Prevention Services, and Recreational Shellfish Activities. I would have to get more information.
But given that there's never been any real controversy on these items, let's just, we'll, if there's something to be asked, we can take it up next week.
Yeah, next week when we do our review.
Let's not worry about, worry about trying to get more today.
Thank you, Chair.
Absolutely. 5B, PHSS as well, County Program Agreement with Department of Social and Health Services, Division of Vocational Rehabilitation.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Manager, Assistant County Managers. I'm really here just to introduce my new community program manager. And she's going to be running the Veterans Program as well as doing Q A for my Development of Disabilities Program. So you're going to see her face more often when we present things like this. And so this is Missy Lipparelli.
Good morning, Commissioners. So Missy Lipparelli, and I'm here today to ask that you approve our annual renewal, annual renewal of our school-to-work contract with the Department of Social and Health Services, Division of Vocational Rehabilitation Program. And so this is just a renewal, contract number 2463-5313. And what this does is place high school graduates with developmental disabilities into jobs. This renewal is going to be for July 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025. And the D V R, or the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation, pays the county $10,500 for each student that is able to successfully sustain a job. This does also complement our village-funded high school transition program and basically helps maintain our community partnerships that support transition services with development, developmental disabilities in Thurston and Mason County. So, yeah, open for any questions, but hoping you'll support the approval of our renewal.
And that $10,000 doesn't just come to the county. We, we give it to the, the agencies who actually do the support, do the work, the direct work. They get paid that amount. And this is, this program is really to help high school students get a job before they get out of school. Because a lot of times, we'll lose those students to home and they don't, they don't get into the job market so much later in life. So that's what this is. Also, I will say, sorry, I was gonna let her talk the whole thing, but so Thurston County is, was one of the first counties to implement school-to-work. There were, there were about seven of us for the last 10 to 15 years. And D V R, Division of Voc Rehab, has made a push this year to get other counties on board. They want all counties to participate in this, so they have new contracts coming out, try to encourage that.
Questions for Missy or?
I guess on, normally, there would be a contract to number, number assigned to the verbiage in here.
Yeah, absolutely. So I, that was honestly one of my first questions when we took a look at this contract. There's not like a not-to-exceed amount, because the amount that we receive from them is per student that is determined to be in a sustainable and successful job placement. And so if that doesn't happen, we, it's basically an outcome-based.
Right, right, so there won't be a dollar amount that's exact, but the contract number itself needs to be in here.
Okay, we'll, we'll make that correction, I'll go back. Okay, we'll, we'll make that correction, I'll go back and fix that.
You'll see like on the next one coming up. It's got a contract number.
Yeah, because you mentioned she mentioned the contract number.
So that somebody can review if they want to see what we're talking about, they can look at that.
Right, I didn't notice that, thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure we fix that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I just have a quick question, uh, like the way the money moves through, because, um, it was mentioned that ten thousand five hundred is reimbursed to the county. And then you said that it eventually goes to the agencies that offered the support. Does it come to the county and then the county pays the agencies? Is that kind of how it?
Well, we, we get, so it's, it's reimbursement for services. So once the agency gets a job, then they're eligible for that payment. But we pay the agencies each month for a certain amount. So we, we actually, uh, we support the agencies until that payment comes out. Um, and the way we do that is with the millage money that we, that we get for, for D D A.
Awesome, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, guys. See you go.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome.
Yeah, really nice to meet you.
Okay, next up is five C, ILA with Capital Region E S D one thirteen for the Youth Tobacco Prevention Program, I assume. Alicia Hughes from Public Health, good morning.
Hi, Alicia Hughes, Lacey Health Director and Manager. I'm at a conference, so apologies for the background. And we are asking for approval for the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five contract with Capital Region one thirteen as for our youth cannabis commercial tobacco prevention program, um, also known as Y C C two C C. This program, uh, helps us do youth annual adult prevention programming within Thurston County Health Education, um, youth participatory, um, engagement projects and nationwide support for, uh, the region for our youth prevention programming. Happy to answer any questions?
Commissioner Claus.
Eighty-five thousand for the year.
I was just wondering, so, um, thanks, Alicia, for that info. And we met earlier this year, I think with Keteri and, um, talked a little bit about this program. And it's something I really support. And I'm just wondering, um, I, I remember we approved an item not too long ago for the same program. And I'm wondering if this item is any different? Does it expand the scope of what's going on, um, with this program? Or is it just additional money? Can you maybe speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, um, the one that was just approved last month was an amendment for an additional nine thousand dollars to carry us through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, because Capital Region one thirteen had extra funds. And so, um, that was an extra, that we did some media prevention work, um, within Yelm School District and Thurston County. And this is the new contract for the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five period.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Alicia?
And we've had a contract going on for years, and this is just a continuation. I see it does have a contract number in there.
Okay, thank you, Alicia. Next up is Public Works. Item six A, Resolution for Temporary Closure at Kellogg Drive Northeast, from Seventy-Second Avenue Northeast to Seventy-two oh three Kellogg Drive Northeast. Director of Public Works Jennifer Walker, good morning.
The, uh, item before you is a request for a temporary closure for a portion of Kellogg Drive Northeast for up to four weeks between August twenty-sixth and October thirty-first. We had a three-foot culvert fail in that portion of the road, and we need to, um, fix that. We'll be replacing it with another three-foot culvert right now. Instead of the, the creek flowing through the culvert and out into, uh, Henderson Inlet, it is going through the, the road fill itself, um, and jeopardizing the integrity of the road as well. So we closed off just a portion of it, but we need to replace that culvert. And so that's what this request is for road closure. Um, the section of the road has a daily traffic count, average daily traffic count of a hundred and twelve vehicles per day, and it's affecting seven households in that area. We have reached out to all of the affected property owners and have established a detour route. The length of the detour is one mile and will take approximately three minutes.
I'm looking up locations, is this like?
So I am.
Johnson Point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions for Jennifer?
We did include photos of the, the area as well, so.
Okay, I've got it. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Uh, standing item for Commission Reports, and then we'll have a public hearing scheduled for three thirty. Uh, also Public Works to consider a contract with Shredding Systems, Inc. for removal of a solid waste con, stationary compactor and purchase installation of a new stationary compactor. Jeff Bigford from Public, uh, Works to, uh, give us an overview.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jeff Bigford, Solid Waste Manager. Um, the Wasterecovery Center in Lacey, we process about two hundred fifty thousand tons of, of garbage every year. And so because of that, we, we rely on a solid waste compactor, uh, to, to densify that material for, for getting rid of it and taking it to the, ultimately to the landfill. Um, the last couple of years, we've had some ongoing intermittent mechanical issues with the current compactor, which was installed back in two thousand seventeen. So we're looking, uh, if it should actually reduce our throughput and is slower, uh, to get rid of that waste. So because we haul smaller payloads, uh, for container leaving the facility. So thus, we basically had a need to replace the compactor with one that's more reliable. Um, because we, we do have to process waste that comes in three hundred and sixty-one days a year. So procurement that we are going after looking for a new compactor, we use the Request for Proposals process that allows us for evaluating proposals and selecting a vendor that best meets our operational needs. And this procurement is managed in accordance with R C W thirty-six dot fifty-eight dot oh nine oh, which specifically governs, governs contracts with vendors for solid waste handling systems, plants, and sites and facilities. And based upon that R C W, it requires us, uh, holding a, a public hearing, uh, before we can enter into a contract. So based on that R F P, we get one proposer, which is, um, Shredding Systems, Inc., S S I, uh, out of Wilsonville, Oregon, that responded. Staff as well as our consultant H G R reviewed that proposal and determined that it was, um, acceptable to meet our, the county's needs. So it, with the cost of removing the existing compactor, sales tax included, the total cost of this project would be approximately, uh, two million nine hundred two thousand dollars. And as is usual with all of most of our projects, uh, contract expenditures be funded through revenues from solid waste tipping fees. And just as a point to note, we have no written comments received to date so far. And we're, we're willing to answer any other questions you might have.
Commissioner Edwards?
This, this is respond, in response to an R F P that went out, and you've got this one bid back, is that it?
That is correct.
And is there a dollar amount affiliated with this?
Uh, yeah, two million nine hundred two thousand, that'll be removing the existing and mothballing it for, for future use as well as provision and installation of the new compactor.
And, and so that contract is, we're going to expend probably out of tipping fees, I suppose.
Yeah, all of it, correct.
But we are going to expend about three million dollars.
Just, just under that, correct.
Uh, I think that ought to be in here somewhere to let the public know the cost of doing business as a government. Normally, we would have a dollar amount.
We can have it at a tier.
Okay.
Is that okay? Can you do that? Maybe not.
No, um, Jennifer Walker, Public Works Director. So this is, yes, and it will be a part of, it is in the summary statement, the dollar amount, and it will be a part of what is talked about at the public hearing. But this isn't the contract award, correct, Jeff? So, so we're not doing a contract award here, this is the, the public hearing.
Okay.
Public hearing is not on the contract, public hearing is on choosing this.
It is on the contract, um, but we're not awarding the contract out of this, is that correct, Jeff?
I do believe it is motion to close the public hearing as well as a motion to approve a resolution.
To award the contract?
To award the contract.
All the comment would be on the contract.
We will include the dollar.
Okay. And, um, Jennifer, if, am I remembering correctly that by acquiring this, we're going to be able to still keep the existing compactors, like to provide redundancy?
Yes.
Can you elaborate a little bit on that piece?
As a backup, right?
Yeah.
Yes, so we are.
Which we haven't had before.
We're mothballing it, um, so basically taking it, moving it out of where it's located and, um, having it as backup should our new compactor go down. Because when, as Jeff mentioned, the volume of material that's coming through the, the transfer station is such that with our tipping floor, where the material goes, if we aren't able to move that out and compact it, then it starts to pile up and it starts to pile outside of the transfer station. And we had some, we experienced some of that, um, especially during, um, high volumes during COVID. Um, it has a tendency, not Tennessee, has the, may catch fire. They had that happen in Snohomish County, and thankfully, we did not have that. But we run into permit issues when that happens. And so, um, we are looking to make sure that there are some redundancies, um, and we will have this compactor.
It seems like a big deal though to like, what kind of, what kind of event would have to happen to make it worthwhile to like?
Want to speculate because I don't want to put it out there.
There is something out there that potentially requires us to fire up this hole.
We've had a breakdown before.
Oh, yes.
And then we have garbage backing up.
Yes, yes.
To the question at hand, I, I don't see it being an issue for us to add to, um, move to approve the resolution, authorize the Public Works Director to execute a contract in the amount of various, yeah, we can add that.
Yeah, I mean, it just clarifies things.
No problem.
And then I have, uh, another question on that. The new compactor, how much are we going to spend for that? Do, we've already got a deal, right? We've already went out.
Yes, that's what, yes, it's the.
How much capital outlay did we put out for that? How many dollars?
It's going to be just under three million.
Two point nine million.
And, and so who takes care of the maintenance on that? I, I know that the contractor is running it or something, but who's taking care of the maintenance? Whose responsibility is it for that three million dollar piece of equipment? Who's responsible to maintain it properly? Because I'm sure there's a main, a maintenance schedule that goes with the equipment.
There is.
And if it's kept up, there's less chance of a breakdown. And so I'm wondering, whose responsibility is that?
It is the contractor, um, and we have provisions in the contract to do regular checks with them. And I believe, Jeff, do you want to add any detail? I believe there's a certain dollar amount, but.
That is correct, so Republic Services, who's our current contractor, running the, uh, the facility, is responsible for that ongoing maintenance. And we actually, in their month reports, we see their, uh, what they have done. Um, and basically, there's a checklist that's provided with the, from the manufacturer to make sure that they're doing all the regular ongoing pieces of maintenance that they're supposed to do. If it is a, a breakdown, uh, for, for any reason this is currently in place, is, Republic is responsible for the first fifty thousand dollars of repairs in, in any given contract year. And above that, it becomes the county, as we've experienced that over the past year, where it did get above fifty thousand with our existing, uh, compactor. So we did have some expense there, so. But with a new compactor, with, with ongoing maintenance, that the, those types of repairs should be minimal in the first handful of years.
So we've added provisions in our contract and specific checklists monthly to make sure that, um, we have proper oversight of that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you. That's the public hearing, three thirty. And that wraps up the preliminary review of next Tuesday's agenda. So now we move to item two, Proclamations and Awards, Close the Board, Amy Davis.
The only proclamation included this week is for the Thurston County Fair, which runs from July thirty-first to August fourth. Thomasina will be here, uh, along with some fair board members. And, uh, we're hopeful to get a few fair participants here as well.
Questions? We already covered this, I guess, so that's the only proclamation. What's our next proclamation on the schedule?
Uh, the next one is for Traffic Zero.
What year, what, uh, is that at?
Uh, it's the, it's on August sixth, and it's for the month of August.
Okay. And, uh, can you, since you have the schedule standing in front of you, are we doing the first responder one in September that we did last year?
Yes.
And what's the date of that?
September third.
Perfect, okay, I know. Uh, Councilmember McCall, McCallahan?
McCallahan.
McCallahan, from ten nine oh wanted to be sure we're doing it, and he wants to be present, so we'll make sure.
Barbecue September fourteenth this year. We want to include that in the proclamation.
I think it's, yeah, okay, perfect. Thank you. Any questions for Amy on that? Okay, let's go to Advisory Boards and Commissions.
The only item I have for you today is a reminder of tomorrow's next, um, T R L, um, interview. Jessica Thrift will be joining us via Zoom at the start of the Board of Management tomorrow morning.
And then what's the next step? Do we discuss?
Yeah, we can, um, add time tomorrow morning to discuss them while they're fresh, or we can address them, uh, during next week's agenda setting. We're off bandit tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably while they're fresh in our heads.
Yeah, we'd recommend you do it while it's fresh.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take that up tomorrow morning. Commissioner Fornier, did you, are those recorded in any way? I know they weren't live streamed, but did they?
No, they were not recorded.
Okay, well.
I'll, I'll review the applications.
Yeah. We can, we can all just give our thoughts about what we, what we saw yesterday, it's good applicants. Okay, next up is P I O check-in.
Good morning, Hannah Rhodes, Public Information Officer, and I don't have any updates at this time.
Any questions for Hannah?
Can we do in the future a state of the P I O office kind of scene, right? How we're doing on communications, kind of what is, how we're planning to advance that in the future?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, I'll talk with Megan about that.
Not, not now, but yeah.
Right now. Yeah, we've had that in the past, it's been a while though, so it's not a good idea. All right, Commissioner's items.
I have two.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
And it's just on, um, just requesting updates for the future, I'm not expecting any information now. But on, um, I know the county manager has been working on this, so, um, maybe, um, can we get an update, uh, sometime next week's in regards to the medical bank? Since that was something we would, did receive public comment about. And then, um, when are we going to get, uh, another ARPA update? And I know there's been staffing changes, I know it's been, but.
We should have that, uh, to you, probably in about two weeks tops.
Okay, thank you.
We'll jot that down and bring it back.
Thank you so much.
Two weeks. Other Commissioner items for this morning? Commissioner Claus?
I have one thing, um, so last night we had the T C M C meeting, and we discussed, um, a letter from the CAW, which I want to say, is that the?
Using community acronyms. Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative and CAW is the Community Advisory Work Group.
Thank you. I know they changed the C last, like, last year or something, so I couldn't remember. But, um, the CAW group wrote a letter to the T C M C, which might circulate to the jurisdictions regarding, um, putting more funding into climate work and, uh, particularly adding more staff, um, rather than expanding the scope of current staff. And we had a discussion about that letter last night, so, um, I might actually, I might actually have that circulated, um, so that we can all see it before it comes to us through other means, just so that we all have a heads up. But that request will be coming forward, and I support their request while also knowing, like, we're going to have to. It does say in the letter, like, about exploring new funding sources, not just asking for more money that we don't have. So that's something that I support, and that will probably be coming before us pretty soon.
Yep, I s, I got a copy of that letter as the alternate, so it was, it was worth everybody taking a look at. Thank you for circulating that. Anything else? Okay, uh, then we're at the end of the agenda, just to set the.
Yeah, sorry, Commissioner, Travis is online if there were any questions that the board might have for.
I don't think any legal questions came up this morning, looking at Commissioner Edwards. He's usually a fountain of them, but.
Legal Beagle.
Is there anything you wanted Travis to explore based on?
I've got a pretty interesting topic coming up at three thirty this afternoon. I don't know, I'd like to have Travis come by for that one, but I don't know, we can talk about that offline.
Discuss that offline. I think nothing came up in the meeting, Travis, that.
Sounds great.
We appreciate it.
Okay, I'll, and we can follow up on three thirty as needed. Sure.
Thank you. Okay, um, planning session starts at ten thirty and it goes to two. There's no, um, there's no break structured in the agenda. Commissioner Claus requested, uh, a break, like, if we could do twelve, and it's a little later than a lunch break, but twelve forty-five to one fifteen, would that meet your needs?
That would be perfect, and it doesn't have to be that exact time if that doesn't work, but that'd be perfect.
Would that be appro, is that acceptable for a break? That way accommodates her and then. That way accommodates her, and then we can all grab something to eat in the middle of the planning session.
Commissioner, I, I don't know if, um, warm, but, uh, staff have prepared lunch for today.
Okay.
Other than the berry.
So, um.
Well, you can usually take a break anyways to eat for a little bit, right, before we like?
Usually do, but it's, it's sometimes it's, it's noted on the agenda. And then Commissioner Klaus had came to me and said that she'll, if we don't, if we don't break around that time, she'll have to step out. So I was just seeing if we could coordinate it all, so that we didn't lose her for any time. So maybe like twelve thirty?
It's just sandwiches that we'll keep, so, um.
I'm just saying a heads up, so, cuz like, so if we do that, then we won't, you know, that's a little later than usual, and maybe grab something now if you need it, cuz I will, but, you know, maybe we'll take the lunch break twelve thirty, twelve forty-five, and then Commissioner Klaus comes right back in, and we can get going. Okay, sounds good, we're adjourned for this morning. And back here? Back here at ten thirty.